It's six o'clock on Thursday, October 6th, and welcome Tom Fadden. You're gonna call the, just exactly on time, and call the regular select board meeting to order. First thing is to set a just agenda. I have two things right off the bat, and then we'll see if there are more. So first, I'd like to add an item, I'd like to bump everything down and add an item one for Gary Nolan, who's here, who's been looking at a proposed new site for a town gravel pit. And I'd like to get that on the first thing. And then probably, I think we may as well just add it to the end. So item 10-7 to consider adopting the zoning bylaw changes that we just had a public hearing about minutes ago.
Or could we put that in right after because we aren't gonna have a police report? Because he's not able to be here?
Well, I figured we have some other people here.
No, we just scooped through. Okay.
We'll roll.
Any other items that we need to have on our agenda tonight? Ah, could we have a motion to adopt, to adjust the agenda?
So, however you want to do it.
Amanda, do you have something there?
Yes.
Okay, good. So...
Pick a member, pick a member.
All in favor of adopting the agenda as adjusted, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is communication from the audience. So as far as I know, everybody is here for a particular thing that we're gonna discuss later on. But if that's not the case, or if you want to say something general, now's the time.
That'd be a no.
All right. Nothing there. So next is select board to approve minutes from the regular select board meeting last time, which was September 15th. Let's do that first.
Motion to approve the September 15th minutes as written.
Second.
Any discussion? Did anybody have any? I thought they looked good. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we also had a meeting, we had a special meeting on September 28th, which I think has very short minutes.
I can motion to approve those minutes. Very short.
Second.
Any changes to those or discussion? All in favor of approving those as written, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying. I was absent.
Any opposed? So four ayes and abstention, motion carries. And next is town manager's report given by David Upson, who's skiing in Killington, right?
Yep. He's at the town fair.
He looks really stressed out.
Looks like he's at the bar or anything.
He's skiing.
Can you hear us?
Opey, speak up. It's your chance.
Uh, it's funny to give you an update on the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. Lagoon Two was completely cleaned out and was beginning to finish their project. And now the subcontractors are in there. And they've removed all the ballast sand and the old liner, which they stopped just outside the gate, which everybody could see. I wouldn't play around Sam, but if I were you. And they have begun work in selling the new liner. Just an update on the, which that part of the project is going behind the re-sloping the banks. And we didn't have to truck the sand very far. That's why we staged it there. So we had to truck it outside. And then just a financial update to the dewatering of Lagoon Two. We were, our budget was $600,000. We were $3,450 over budget. We had ten thou, we had $10,900 on fuel surcharges, which is part of the Goulet contract for trucking. And $2,321 in container rental and delivery. So I think we did pretty good on that with the fuel, the cost of fuel. The, putting the electric service in to run the centrifuge was a huge cost savings. I think the bill, the first bill for that was just over $1,200. So we saved some money there that we didn't have to pay GNC for fuel. So that's an update on that project. I had a regional meeting and Tracy Martin is here, so she can update you on kind of the LVRT stuff. And you guys have kind of been a part of it. But we had a regional meeting with Danville St. J and Walden in Greensboro. And Cat was there as well. But there, we're looking to do a scoping and feasibility study, kind of a consortium, scoping feasibility study on the LVRT. And it's gonna require a 20% match on the grant. And we're all gonna kind of kick in. If you guys are good with it, I think you could ask Tracy some questions. And Sherry's been involved in a conversation too, on whether we need to invest in this or not. But we're looking at like maybe $4,000 to $6,000 per community for the match money for this feasibility study. I've gotta let them know by tomorrow if we're gonna be in or not. So we can obviously have a discussion on that. And that's really just, you know, a study to see where we could use, you know, amenities or parking or just like, as dumb more information be included. To know what we don't know.
So I think we can discuss that under our previous item two that's now item three, and we can get into that bit.
Yeah, okay, I'll move along from that.
Great.
The S E group is planning on having one more stakeholder meeting in late October. Here at the group that are doing the bridge design and the park. In early November, we will hold a series of public input sessions to solicit public comment on two proposed bridge designs. And take public input on the design characteristics of the park. So stay tuned for those, keep an eye out for those. We'll be scheduling those in the future. And then my last thing, and I'm making this short because I'm Zoom and it's kind of annoying, but I wanna part, I wanna paint the parking spaces in front of the end, the Hardwick Inn. And there's been some communication and some discussion around how we're gonna paint those spaces. And I've looked at the planning, the audit, the safety audit the planning commission did. And I've looked at the plans that the state, the state project, which the state project has eliminated those spaces entirely. And the planning commission safety audit didn't address those spaces in front of the end. So I'd like to paint them as they were, three spaces offset perpendicular to the curb with the one handicap space. If you guys object to that, I want to, to discuss it for alternatives. One of the things that Tracy Martin was gonna do was discuss with vocal motion. So we could hold off and to see what they had to say about that. But I parked my truck down there in the first space, where the first space would be. And I was well within the fog line that, you know, that the state project was gonna paint. So it's, you know, it's a tough spot. And I think we all know that, but it would be nice. I don't want to leave it to the winter because it's gonna be a free-for-all parking like it has been. So I want to hear your thoughts on that. And maybe we can wait that some way in, way into.
So, Opey, I brought up to Eric already an issue of, in front of the, at the red light where it's no parking and people are parking. And I just, I, as a town, I, it's gonna be, I mean, we're telling people not to park where there's no parking, and they can park where they can't park. And, you know, I don't understand how we're gonna enforce our parking, any of our parking, if we're not enforcing all of our parking. So if we're going to have something marked, I believe our policy needs to be to enforce it. So that's, you know, I don't really care what we do in this particular, well, I do, I think we need more parking. But do you understand what my issue is?
It's an argument to market because then people will park properly.
Well, no, it's an argument that if we're gonna market no parking, then it needs to be enforced no parking.
Oh, he wants to market parking?
No parking.
Well, there.
Yeah.
But...
Oh, other places.
But what's, my point is, you can't have it one way on one end of town and the other way on the other end of town. If you're, no parking here, and it's marked no parking, is no parking or parking, you know what I'm saying? We gotta figure that out.
The cement blockades worked well last summer for that spot we had an issue.
I mean, I'm pro parking, you know that. I want more parking. I think we got rid of way too much. But I just, I see people parking in front, underneath the red light in that no parking zone. They were actually out of their car, motioning each other to get into the stripe zone on where it was angled at the end. You know, so most, you know, they think that that, they're supposed to be within that stripe zone now. So, you know, but if someone parks on Main Street illegally and we have to have some enforcement issues somewhere, if it was me, the first thing I'm gonna say is, well, how come you're telling everybody they can park up there where there's no parking?
We don't have any enforcement though currently on Main Street at all.
Well, we could just do away with enforcement. That's a good answer. Sherry?
I'm, that's, I'm not offering that as an answer, but right now, we don't have any enforcement.
Well, that's fine. I'm just saying, if we're gonna enforce it, and point A, you need to have the rules enforced everywhere. And the current situation doesn't allow for that.
So just to circle back to the question of adding some striping for parking in front of the Hardwick Inn. So just, so David, what you're saying is you park your truck like as if there was a parking spot there, the way you're envisioning striping them, which is similar to how they were before this project. And your, your back bumper was still within the fog line? Or out, or whatever, on the curb side of the fog line?
What is the fog line?
It's the white line.
Well, not in there where they were going to the dotted white line where they were going to paint it.
I mean, I don't know if a parking...
We're not hearing you, dude.
Say again?
The fog line was, is still there, the dotted white line where they were going to paint it.
I'm sure comments would appreciate it if we could with us.
I'm sure everybody went on Main Street.
So let's spin it the other way. Do people, do people have concerns or opposition to repainting those lines?
We have to repaint them again next year so we can, if there's an issue, right, we paint them every year.
Yeah, Tom paints them, all the lines, every year, because they all go away.
I don't, I'm off painting now. That wasn't my issue.
Yeah.
So, what I was saying before, there's a dotted fog line that's still there. And my truck fits within that. So you can go look down there and see where the fog line is. And there's enough room for two, maybe three parking spots at an offset perfectly down to the curb.
Okay.
Yeah. Do it.
Tom, do you have anything to say?
Nope.
Okay.
Get out your paintbrush, brother.
So it sounds like everybody is on board with reinstating those parking spots. So whatever, you have our support, not our opposition. All right. Is it, did that, it was, is there more to your report, or is that the end of your report?
He's struggling, struggling tonight.
That was the end.
That was the end?
Go back to the bottom.
I have a question. When are we getting our new big screen TV and the new camera and speaker setup? Or do we have to put that in the budget? She's saying yes, we have to put it in the budget.
We should write the bill, because we got one in mind.
We need one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Just throwing it out there now that we're struggling. Next, so thank you.
You got a good kid, he can probably take some out of him.
Yeah, exactly.
Next up is the road foreman report, and Tom Fadden is here to deliver it.
In person.
We pretty much got caught up on grading. I think just about everything is just about graded except for some of the smaller side roads. All the roads right now actually looking pretty good. We did complete the water main over at the depot. We got that out of way in case the townhouse does their addition and plus the sprinkler system.
Which is, the work is starting on Monday.
Nice. So that's all said and done. We had to dig up two sewer lines and repair and fix those. We got those done. Crusher is here. They actually started crushing on Tuesday. So the guys since Tuesday afternoon, but now hauling gravel. We did some up on bridgeman. I think we did a little bit over on Montgomery up on the upper end. Stage House, Bailey Hazen. I think today they finished up on Dimmock Road. And then next week, of course, weather permitting, we'll keep going as long as we can keep, keep on.
Is this the latest we've ever had the crusher in?
Yes.
It seems really late.
Yeah, well, they were running in the same problems everybody else is. You order a par. So that pretty much set them back, I think you said, almost a month. By the time they got the par, by the time they got it in, by the time they finished up that one spot and started going on and on. So, so that put them way behind. But we do have one truck down, that's down at Clark's right now. That's gonna cost somewhere around 14 grand to get that one fixed. We already spent 12 grand this year on one ton. So that pretty much shoots that budget out ahead. Because I think we had $30,000 in there for repair for the year.
Total?
Total, for the year. So just those two trucks there themselves, so.
You would think that by running pretty new trucks, pretty new equipment, that we wouldn't have these huge repair bills.
Well, the problem is, once again, is the cost of everything is doubled. It's like our grater blade setup on the front with all the teeth on it and stuff. You know, before the pandemic hit and stuff, you know, you could buy that whole complete set for $3,500. Today, it's $8,000. So when that grater goes, the teeth stay. Not like a complete setup, so that stays with us. Besides that, we're just trying to wrap stuff up around town and stuff. We got the cold storage all straightened out today and got the excavator all washed off. Put that away hopefully for full of the year. Hopefully nothing else happens and stuff, so. We've been trying to think about other things to do around the village. I think next week, between me and Ed and Mike, I think we're just gonna use just the one ton, go around, cut some of the brush around the village here and there and get that done. Because we're gonna keep the other guys on the back, back roads as long as we can. Let's see, Montgomery Road, that is slated to get paved on the 18th. So it's kind of near close, but let's see, get all done.
Just that little section.
Just that little section right there.
Did you end up digging that down?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. We dug that down, took out a couple boulders that were kind of heaving up through and put a good layer of stay mat down into it and stuff and...
Hope for the best.
Hope for the best.
All right.
About it.
How long do you think the crusher's gonna be here?
I would say it should be here too, probably about the end of next week, if everything goes well.
So you'll have, that ties up how many, how many guys, because you have people trucking and grading.
That will tie up three guys.
Three guys.
Yeah. There's no Ed and Kenny, they were going around this week too, doing meter pits and stuff, checking those out. Because Opey had a list of, I think somewhere around 20 of them, that were kind of so-so, some were reading, some were not. You know, some, the water was actually shut off. Some were, the numbers were different, and they were down at the sewer plant and not in places where they're supposed to be. So trying to, trying to get those straightened out, so.
Good. All good stuff to do before winter.
Yes.
Thank you. Questions for Tom?
So it's lovely job you did up there at the townhouse in the back. But we're parked, we've been parking where you just put that seed and...
Yeah.
So we have events this weekend where potentially we need that parking, but it's all roped up so that it doesn't...
It's gonna be awful soft, that's the only thing.
Yeah.
It's gonna rut it up and stuff.
Ultimately, do you want that to be stay mat?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we talked about, but I guess...
Because we put everything back the way it was.
Yeah.
Because the road is back where it was, and then we reseeded and grassed down in front where we dug that up, so.
So it's just a miscommunication, because I've been begging for stay mat since last spring. But, so we'll just leave it the way it is and people will park wherever they park. But that is the goal, to have that all be parking so they can go nose in to the depot.
Oh, okay.
So two, you know, two sides.
Mr. Upson?
Come on through the camera there.
Come on in.
Gary.
Can you hear me, dude?
Every other word.
He's frustrated.
Are you looking at the parking, park on Creamery Road? And important that that off, so people aren't parking behind the townhouse until that's settled.
Oh, have people park on Creamery Road until that's settled? It's not that many spaces.
It's just hard to tell people, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Showing up for a movie and then nobody even knows about the, so few people actually even know about the Creamery Road parking that it's hard to get the message out with no signage. Yeah. But we'll just see what happens. We'll work it out.
All right. I'm gonna move us on to the police department report. Mike Henry is not able to be with us tonight. Mr. Upson, is there anything we need to know about, or can I just move us on? Move us on? Okay. It's that hazard of being a police chief or fire chief is sometimes you have other priorities.
Number one?
Number one, we have Gary Nolan here with us tonight. Be welcome. And we have, kind of back to some of Tom's report about, we have a crusher down in our gravel pit right now. But one of the things that we've been hearing, Tom's been trying to remind us over the past couple years, is that we're running out of material in our current pit. And Tom, I think you've estimated there might be like two years left, but this is a, this is a year.
This year, then we'll, we'll go from there, so.
So, so there's at least one other potential site that we're interested in, right? And so you, I believe you've done some work to assess.
Yes, as a matter of fact, Tom, was September 12th, we went up and dug test holes. At Ken Davis's pit, and Ken Davis graciously furnished an excavator and operator for a period of time we needed in the deep test holes. I know some people prefer probably to do test boards and that type of thing, but for the price is right, so I opted to go this route. And I, in my opinion, it gives you a pretty good cross-section by being able to dig a hole with excavator down to 12, 15 feet. And you can see what's there as opposed to drilling a two or four inch hole, you know. But first I want to say, I apologize, I don't have any handouts or any of that stuff for you guys that I can provide them at a later date if you need them. But I just want to preface the meeting by saying that I, I think this is a heck of a deal for the town. 214 acres. And there's several acres that are already permitted. And by digging the test holes, there's about roughly seven acres on the south end of the pit. Tom, I don't know how many of the rest of you have been there, but Tom was there. He got there just as we were finishing up digging the test holes, basically, on the 12th. And we dug 14 holes that day. And the south end of the pit, most of the test pits were 12 to 15 feet deep. There was only one that we didn't find basically any gravel in. And that was right next to the wood line. So it probably wouldn't really impact the amount of yardage that's there. Ken and his proposal originally had estimated approximately 200,000 to 250,000 yard material left in, in the permitted areas. And I pretty much concur, at the beginning I had, with permission from Mr. Upson, I engaged an engineer and we did some preliminary work to see the quality of the material and how much if, if everything would calculate out to basically what Mr. Davis provided for an estimate. And to me, it looks like, he's very conservative on his estimate. 15 foot holes that we dug would give you in the neighborhood of, I think it's around, oh, what did I come up, 165,000 yards, 168,000. That's at 15 feet deep, and the face that he's working with now was much harder than that. Probably 25, maybe upwards of 30 feet. So a real conservative estimate on this plus or minus seven acres that's permitted on the south end will give you 168,000 yards. And at your current average use of 13,000 total yards, sand, crush gravel, and other aggregate, it's approximately 13,000 yards. And that one area will give you about 13 years of resource. On the northern side, there's, the floor of the pit, the test hole that I dug up there, it's about, the most shallow one is like five feet to walk around water. So there's not a lot of material. Because permit wise, you gotta stay three feet above. And so I, I would suggest staying right where it is. Leaving the floor where it is and excavating what there is left of material there. And it's pretty hard to quantify because it's backing up against the wetlands. And, but there's, and there's ledge in that area. But there's several thousand yards left in the northern end. And there's, I'm estimating maybe 15,000 to 18,000 yards of overrun material that's been screened out, that when you move the crusher in there, you could supplement the crush gravel with that oversized stone. And it makes really good crush gravel. I've done that in several other places. So none of your material goes to waste, basically. It's all, it's all usable material. I don't know, I, my understanding is that he's offering this parcel to the town for around $500,000. And if you use... And if you use, again, a very conservative figure, two hundred thousand yards left in there, which I know there's much more than that, uh, you're looking at two dollars and fifty cents a yard for cost, to get, to pay for your property, not including interest, I don't know what the town would get for an interest rate, but, so you're looking at two dollars and fifty cents a yard, um, and the processing costs typically be around three dollars, three fifty a yard. And I would suggest that, and I think uh, Opie is in agreement with me, that Mr. Davis will include his trommel screen in the sale. And so your town people can, with your equipment that you have, you can run, screen your own sand and I don't know what you charge off your equipment, or how you charge it, but uh, typically if a subcontractor went in there and did it, you'd probably be paying around three fifty a yard for processing. And uh, reclamation costs, I typically figure about fifty cents a yard to reclaim the pit when you're all said and done, or work a area and get it so you can reclaim it. And then I, typically that's a little high, but with the permit conditions and whatever you have to deal with, you'll probably use that up eventually. You know, by the time you grade it and seed it and all check, and there is plenty of topsoil on site, uh, Mr. Davis has done a great job of saving all the topsoil, stockpiled around the outside edges, so that can be put back on reasonably easy. And if you went there to crush, well, you ended up with a total cost of about six dollars and fifty cents a yard if you're sand. I don't know what you're paying now, but I know Ken's...
What's that?
That's for sand, you're saying?
That, that would be sand, yeah.
Yeah.
Screen sand, yeah. And his list price is nine dollars a yard. And uh, screen gravel is listed at ten dollars a yard. And I figure if you, and uh, gravel construction, their, their sand price is ten forty-five, or ten sixty, ten forty-five a yard. Their screen gravel is twelve twenty-five. Manaus list price sand is nine sixty and their crush gravel is fifteen fifty-four. And if you crush your material, you're gonna, the gravel, you have to add another four seventy-five, five dollars a yard, at today's crushing rates. I don't know what you're paying, but should be in that range somewhere, four fifty, four seventy-five this year with, cause I got uh, crushed thirteen, sixteen, about twenty thousand yards in another pit and it was originally quoted four twenty-five and with the field fuel price increase, it went up to four seventy-five, so those are the numbers I'm throwing out there. Lord only knows what's gonna happen in years to come, but uh, so at today's prices, I figure you're gonna have uh, approximately ten dollars a yard in your crush gravel, by you owning the pit and whatever, so. My big pitch for this would be, there's already a area that's stripped off, it's ledge, it's probably forty foot elevation in edge and ledge and it's probably, it's not very wide right now, it's probably fifty to seventy-five feet wide and a couple hundred feet long, so. My proposal would be, if you decide to purchase this, uh, right from the get-go, I would propose to apply for an amendment to permit to drill and blast. And drilling and blasting costs are approximately five bucks a yard. So, you're gonna be...
We could have our own crushed ledge.
You'd have your own crushed, crushed stone, crushed, you know, ditched stone two to four, or two to five, six inch, whatever.
Yeah, you got everything.
Depending, I mean, you gotta, whatever your percentage grade is, it depends on the stone size, your stone line you're ditching, so.
And is that the type of thing that we would do maybe annually, like we do with a crusher? Like you hire someone to come in and drill and blast?
Maybe bi-annually.
Or when, or yeah, or maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I would foresee taking that ledge out, cropping it's there, I would start on the backside of that.
Mm-hmm, right back into the...
Crush it into the pit, or blast it into the pit and crush it there.
Yep.
And take that down to that same elevation at the gravel pit.
Out front, yeah.
And then I would strip the front of it and you could come right in from ground level and get another forty foot face.
Yep, right on the ground.
And, so you, I mean, you got, I didn't figure the yardage that might possibly be there, but there's a lot of ledge there.
Right, cause we're talking still, everything permitted is how many acres out of two forty, it's not very many, right?
No, there's uh...
Well, yeah, there's more than seven, there's like twenty.
It's like twenty.
There's normally like twenty something acres.
Twenty something acres, it's actually being utilized right now, so there's actually a lot more to the problem.
Yeah, I mean, you got, when the gravel runs out, I mean, cause you can, at the end of the day, if you have no gravel and you've got ledge, you can make, you can make sand out of ledge with no problem. And towns have tried it, the only complaint they get is that you can't see it on the road. Cause it typically, it's a light, it's light colored. I know a town in Worcester did that and people were complaining, cause they, it doesn't show up like the brown road sand, you know? It's, it's just a sh, it's actually sharper, it makes better sand early for snow and ice and, than gravel sand does, but...
The other thing, even though that's not as close as we would like it to be to the village, it's as close as we're gonna get. Anything else from now on, if we don't do this, we're gonna be buying material from further away, so it's not gonna get any better.
Same with sand and gravel aggregates, you gotta go where it is.
And it's not, in today's permit, the most permit world, they're not gonna be opening up any big quarries.
I was reviewing the permit conditions and almost seems to me like the Act Two Fifty Commission was anticipating ledge removal, because they changed one of the conditions, condition seven from the original permit to uh, condition thirteen D of the amended permit. And it says all rock drills must be equipped with dust suppression devices, so it leads me to believe that they're anticipating that. But, and I know Opie was looking for me to maybe provide a estimate for Act Two Fifty Amendment and I wouldn't even begin to dare to go there. It's uh, if you have no opposition, I'd go right through it.
We can absolutely kind of knock it.
If you do, like...
It is like this, gotta go somewhere.
I permitted a gravel pit in Greensboro for Howard Minosh and it went through as a miner. And Act Two Fifty Commission said, I've never heard of such a thing, gravel pit, it was a miner, but everybody says, whoa, you know, what do you need for condition, what do you need for help from us, you know, they needed the gravel. So, it seems good the further north you go and the, and the, I probably shouldn't reveal this, but I'm a environmental commission number five commissioner. Which doesn't do much good for Town of Morristown, cause we're trying to get a, an amendment to a pre, to a gravel pit that we've had for, I don't know, I was working for Minosh when sold it, I think for like eighty-six, it's been a permitted gravel pit. And it was all phased originally and we're going for phase number three. In January, it'd be three years trying to get it.
Trying to get, I guess it's opposition, we're neighbors opposition.
One or two people.
Yeah.
It's just...
So, so we don't know?
You don't know, I, that's why I wouldn't dare venture a guess, but my guess is that you've got no neighbors there.
Right, that's good.
Ken Davis and I, Opie and I talked about it and, and I think Ken is on board with it, is that anybody that purchases property, any of his properties around and uh, would be aware of what's happening there, what's proposed to happen there and they can't.
But even in the case that um, an amendment for drilling and blasting gets held up and takes us years, we've got, we've got twelve or thirteen years of material.
Minimum of, I'm, I'm thinking you got a minimum of twelve, thirteen years of aggregate supply there.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this, this is, it's amazing.
How are you paying for it?
What are the... We haven't said yes yet, but um, what are, what are the...
To pay, yeah.
Well, right, yeah, well, what are the next, what are kinda the next steps with something like this, like we, so you're, cause we've been kinda getting updates from, from you and uh, this is kinda the main report and then do we, I guess it's up to us to decide and talk to Kenny.
So, this one, the ball's in your court and Opie, he's got his hand up and he's, I, I know he's approaching a uh, a purchase and sale, I know he's talked with Mr. Davis.
I think looking for a town meeting deadline, right?
That was my understanding.
Yeah, so I believe, I would let you speak, but we have a hard time hearing you. Do you wanna try?
I think we need to get on this before we lose it.
Okay, so um, I think what he's saying is he's working on a purchase and sale with Ken Davis and, and that would be a contract where we agree that we're gonna try to buy it. And uh, we would try to hold a vote on that at a town meeting, is that?
Or pay for it, bond vote.
Bond vote? Yep, and so that would be sort of our timeline. Um, and just, I don't know if you heard it, Opie, but Danny's over here in the corner saying uh, gotta, that we should get on this, but you already are, but, yeah.
Yeah.
No, just one of the things, at the end of the, at the end of the day...
So, it's you guys.
There's, there's three phase power right at the entrance, so this...
Oh, there is? I was gonna ask, because another great ra, way to reclaim a gravel pit is to put a whole bunch of solar in there.
Solar or a light industrial park or...
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And there's also, if memory serves me correctly, um, I think Ken Davis told me it's been scouted and there's, in the neighborhood of five thousand fifty-five hundred taps or we'll see, it's up in there.
Yeah.
And you can, I've checked with a couple sugar makers and paying basically a dollar a tap in this neck of the woods and they would be looking to sign a ten-year lease, because the initial setup is about forty dollars a tap, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're gonna set up for five thousand taps, you're a couple hundred thousand dollar investment, so they would need...
That's good, that's David, that's, that's good.
I mean, that would give me revenue, maybe, I don't know what the tax ramifications are gonna be with Town of Greensboro, but...
Right, that would offset.
That would offset the tax.
At least that, that wouldn't have come out of the operating budget of the pit, which we wouldn't now have, but anyway, let's do it, let's just, just do it.
Danny says, just do it.
Well, it's good about...
Yeah, I think it'd be remiss if you...
I'm sure, I haven't heard, but I'm sure there's other people that gotta be interested.
There's uh...
I can't believe this.
In private conversation, Ken told me there's two, maybe three people looking at it and he's holding off because...
Yep, he said all along, he liked the town to have it.
Yeah, he wants the town to have it, to have it.
It would be good, right?
He's uh, I'm sure he could get a lot more money from private individual than you.
Yeah, cause it's, I mean, just being permitted for what it is is, is huge right now.
It is.
Another town, too.
Another town?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, like we were just saying, everybody's getting farther out.
Everybody's getting, I mean, Greensboro's been going way up to where they've been going for a number of years now, which doesn't seem like...
They're going to Kenny's.
They're going to Kenny's now, so they're out of there where they were.
Uh, further know, would, would, would Bernie have made this issue? I don't know if they did, Cabic was there, Greensboro, us.
I mean, we could put together a plan, but maybe we'd have to get rid of a little bit to help out.
Well, he has a meeting with Ken next week.
Okay, great. Did you hear that? He's, Opie's meeting with Ken next week.
Good job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause it's uh...
Yeah, it sounds like, right, and the timing is really good, because our current...
Yeah, we're running out.
Yeah.
We go thirteen years, thirteen months.
The key here, the thing is already permitted, so you can just throw it in there and keep it on and going.
Well, we've been up there now for a while, it's gotta be at least forty years.
Been up there now, long time.
Wow.
Yeah, cause I've been up in that pit now for at least thirty.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know what the legalities are of a municipality selling to another municipality. I know, I, I know you can't sell to private contractors, but...
Right, and as I just said, that may be a way to offset the...
You might be able to...
Amendment for a few years, you know, we had longevity in the material.
Right.
To help offset some of the cost to us for, for ten years. You know, a ten-year plan to recoup some between, you know, to have some revenue from that would be great.
Right.
Yeah, cause I think, I ran the number, I think you could pay back the whole thing in like eight years, by the, by the money saved.
Cool.
You know, and that's at today's rates and, of course, it's all relative, but everything else is gonna go up to one of my social security checks, so.
Hopefully my salary.
Yeah.
Gary's one of my bosses.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, for Danny, if you have any questions, all Danny knows how to get hold of me and...
Please have a question.
Will you be providing us a written report with a summary of what you've just told us?
I can do, gladly do that, yep.
I don't think we need anything really foolishly.
I think it'd be good to have the reports.
Just the numbers that you give us, you know, but what I'm saying, we don't need twelve pages.
No.
We need something that we can understand and, and do, you know, you know what we need.
Yeah.
It'd take me the rest of the year to type up twelve pages. Actually, I had my wife get it, get it done quicker. But uh, no, anytime, if you got any, any questions, Opie's got my phone, Danny knows how to get hold of me.
Great, thank you very much, we really appreciate your...
Very good, and good luck with it, I think, uh, it was gonna be a huge asset for town.
Great. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, excellent. I'm going to move us along to our next item, which is uh, select board to review and consider approval of tobacco and liquor license for the NU Beverage LLC.
Make a motion that we uh, approve the license for NU Beverage LLC, which is Eminem.
Second.
Yeah, so just as Danny said, these folks currently purchased the uh, what...
Eminem.
Which has recently been Eminem and this seems to...
Been Eminem before, Dee and Ally.
Yeah, it's been a lot of things in the last few years, alright.
Tanya is on, if anyone has questions.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
We can hear her, right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you a lot better than Opie.
Cause I took my video off, so you can't see me.
Oh.
I don't have any, I talked to the, I talked to, I just randomly talked to the current owner today. He's excited about the idea of being able to retire, so.
And we had a written thing in our, in our packet saying that there are no issues.
No issues.
So, so wait, we have motion and we had a second, right?
Yep.
So, uh, all in favor of approving the liquor license for NU Beverage LLC, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, Tracy Martin's here to...
Wait a minute. It's also tobacco.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's more than one, if you look, there's a list of...
Oh, it's sorry.
Tanya, is tobacco substitute endorsement, is that like vaping?
Vaping, yes.
Thank you.
I thought it was all online now.
Well, that, that work is done online, we still vote.
Yeah, but, oh, do we have to vote for everyone, so all three things separately? So tobacco license and then tobacco substitute endorsement?
We usually do them together, but we need to...
We didn't.
So what's the problem?
So we did the, we did the liquor license, Sherry's pointing out, but...
This is all for the same, for...
But we should also uh, probably have a, go ahead, Tanya.
I was just saying, when you, if you approve, just if you set off for it at the same time, because it's, it's no longer paper, so you have to sign, so I go by a minute to...
Right, it says, I move that we approve a second-class liquor license, tobacco license, and tobacco substitute endorsement for NU Beverage LLC.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pretty sure Amanda would've took care of that on her own, as she usually does without that little parade.
Alright, so motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, great, thanks. Uh, next up is uh, select board to review and sign the agreement for the wastewater plant upgrade bond.
No, we have Tracy.
Nope, sorry, I just skipped Tracy, again, I had you, but then I moved forward. Alright, let me back up, Tracy Martin's here to... All right, let me back up. Tracy Martin's here to talk to us about the trailheads of the LVRT and the, all, all that stuff.
All that stuff. Are you gonna be able to hear me from here?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, so some of what I'm gonna say, some of you folks already know. And, um, Opie, if you're listening, is he still there?
Yep, he's there.
I was gonna ask him to flail around if I say something incorrectly.
He just took the cue to go on.
Yeah, we'll see him wave it.
So, um, just to give a really quick, uh, sort of overview of what's going on, we're all like, the, the, the long anticipated completion of the Lemoyle Valley Rail Trail is upon us. It's very exciting. And lots of folks in Hardwick have been thinking about this for quite a while, especially in specific places where an, an anticipated impact was, you know, an impact was anticipated, including at the Hardwick Historical Society where we've been talking about, um, how people traveling on the rail trail might, uh, impact our visitation. We're pretty excited about that, but there are also some challenges that could come with that. Um, the townhouse has also thought about that. It, um, and at the same time, people in Har- East Hardwick were thinking about how the trail coming through that village might impact things and, um, and how we wanna kind of welcome people and, and handle that traffic. So, East Hardwick actually got a jump on things. I, I wish I had somebody here. Kaylee, I don't know if you know when they started those discussions, but Helen Beatty...
About the park?
About, yeah, the rail.
Yeah, it was almost a year ago, I think.
That's, that's what I was thinking, yeah. So there've been discussions in East Hardwick for some time about the placement of a rail, a trailhead somewhere in the village. Um, but a lot of things got held up because we knew that the LVRT management plan from V-Trans was like imminent. It was supposed to come out. It was actually supposed to come out like, I think, in June initially. And so we knew that there were gonna be some, um, specifications and some, uh, suggestions about how, uh, trailhead designs might be, um, thought through. And so people kind of put things on hold, waiting for the management plan to come out, which didn't in fact come out till, I think, almost the end of August, I think that's right. But anyway, it, it is out now and so the folks that have been thinking about this for a while have sort of got back into it. And, um, and shortly after the release of the management plan, V-Trans also announced a grant program, um, to help communities along the rail trail develop, fund and develop trailheads and what they call, and a couple of other types of, um, amenities. So, um, in the management plan, they proposed three different levels of trailheads and sort of, you know, from a very basic to a slightly more developed. And something they call a pause place, which is just a place literally where people may stop for a little while, take in a view, uh, maybe there's seating, you know, things like that.
Port-a-potty.
Mm-hmm, port-a-potty possibly, right? And then, well, it's been a big topic of conversation, the port-a-potty thing. Um, and then also, um, there's a lot of thinking in the management plan about connectivity, particularly connecting the rail trail to village centers and downtowns and also to other, um, attractions and to other trail systems, which comes into play in Hardwick, of course, with our amazing Hardwick trails. So, um, East Hardwick, uh, initially, the team that was looking at the East Hardwick trailhead was interested in having a trailhead at the location of the historic depot, which is no longer standing, but we know where it was. And so that was kind of right away, I think, the preferred area for, um, people. A lot of these, a lot of these folks, there's only a handful of them, but in, um, they're working kind of through the East Hardwick Neighborhood Organization on, on this proposal. And, uh, because that area, the depot is gone, the siding is gone, the, you know, the warehouse that used to be supply McFeeters or that's where the feed came in from McFeeder Store, that's gone. The, um, infrastructure that used to exist in that part of the village is gone. And things are overgrown and it's, you know, there's some damp places. It's a little bit of a complicated site. So, um, Irene Nagel, who's on the board of Eno, I don't know if any of you know Irene, but she also works for NVDA. Um, she was able to get a little transportation money. They have a fund, NVDA has a fund, it's either called TPI or TIP, I can't ever remember. Transportation Improvement or whatever. So she was able to get a little money from that fund for the East Hardwick project to do a scoping study to help them figure out what was possible in this location. And so they were able to hire an, um, transportation engineer. They had about six weeks to accomplish this because the money had to be spent. Sorry, okay, speeding up, speeding up. Anyway, the East Hardwick, as of Tuesday, that group has selected one of the proposed locations that came out of this scoping study. So as of just this week, we now have an actual plan for East Hardwick along with pricing, which was a little bit shocking, but anyway. In the meantime, in Hardwick, we have a, a much more straightforward project because infrastructure that existed is largely still in place, including the depot, um, the townhouse. We have water to the site, we have electric to the site, and we have potentially some really nice parking. Um, so we could already put some of that ledge to use if we ever get that ledge, right? Um, anyway, uh, so backing up again, so there's this grant program out there that V-Trans has put out there to support communities doing this kind of work. And there are two different types of grants you can apply for. One is a scoping grant, and that's what, um, Opie was talking about at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, they have been meeting, before I was even in this position, with other towns in the kingdom along the LVRT about ways to maybe collaborate on this. And so, uh, but all the towns in the, in the NUK on the LVRT would like to apply together as a consortium for one of these planning grants. I think V-Trans was pretty impressed by that because as far as I can tell, they don't have anybody else doing that, even though they've suggested towns do that. But in the same time, we are ready, like, we've already done the scoping for the East Hardwick project. We don't need to do that again. And our, our project right here near the depot is pretty straightforward. It's, there's not a lot of design that has to happen. So we would also like to apply for what they're calling a design and construction grant for the two village trailheads and a pause place. I'm just here to report on the fact that we've gotten this far. Today we had, uh, there's a required site visit. You have to have a site visit with the LVRT people from V-Trans before you can apply for this grant. They had already come to the East Hardwick site several weeks ago, so today they came and met us here at the depot. And Eric and Wiz and Sherry were, were all part of this meeting, as were a few other members of the community. Um, a few things we learned, so, so my, initially, I didn't understand that we could be involved, we could be part of both of these proposals. I wasn't sure one town could be involved, but, but we've gotten permission, that's fine, we can do that. Um, the, the thing that I'm gonna be struggling with in the next couple of weeks, and I kind of want to put it out there to you all now, is this grant would also require a 20% match from the town. So the, the grant will, will pay for 80% of the project. Town has to come up with the other 20%, and they, they specify that it has to be a cash match. Now, that got a little murky, and if any of you want to help me with this, what I think...
Although today, they said there might be some...
Know-it-all.
Some, uh, some consideration for like the obvious things, parts of construction that we can have our town crew do instead of, instead of hiring it out. And so there, there was a gray area there that, uh, sounds like it doesn't have to be full on cash.
What they said was at the time of the application, which is due November 1st, so like, we don't have a ton of time to figure this out. Um, at the time of the application, we have to be comfortable that we could pay 20% of whatever the total co- thing is that we're planning in cash. But they said today that at the time that we're really like down to design and figuring out what the different pieces of the work are, if there are pieces of that work that we think the town could do ourselves, in other words, we're pay our own people to do this rather than get a contractor, like maybe some of the parking work, um, that we come to them at that time and say, "We would prefer to have this." And, and at that time, they may approve, they can approve that. So in fact, it does kind of come out being in kind, but they couldn't guarantee it right now and it's kind of project by project.
Is the grant for the planning and scoping or for the project?
They're two.
They're two different ones.
One is for the planning, one is for the construction.
NVDA is writing the, no, one is for scoping and one is planning construction.
And it sounds like Tracy, that we have this, it sounds like Hardwick's already done the scoping, right? That we know that, we know the East Hardwick and the Hardwick location. So it sounds like, so basically the only reason for us to be a part of the scoping and feasibility would basically be a part of this consortium?
Well, I think, and again, I, if, I don't know, Opie can jump in, but I think, Opie and Sharon and I talked about this because we had, the three of us had been at this meeting where this consortium thing came up. There's a lot more of the trail besides, you know, that goes through town. We've identified two places where we're pretty sure we want to have some amenities for people. But there are other opportunities, including where the Hardwick Trails comes to meet LVRT, places down there, you know, closer to Atkins Field. There are a few other places where there's potential for future. I mean, we're thinking of this particular design construction as being like our first phase, that the low hanging fruit, the things we're pretty sure we, and we have enough information to do now, but we're gonna be learning as people are using this trail. And so this scoping study will help us maybe identify their other opportunities in other spots along the trail. Also, because we probably won't be able to do everything we want to do under this grant 'cause they're too expensive, they're not gonna give us that much money. The, being part of this larger study, I think, will help us go to other funders down the road and say, "Hey, now we want to do this and such. Look, we have all this..."
And is the design and construction grant also with the other towns or is that individual to Hardwick?
That's just us.
So it's two different, so it's two different things. One of them would be a match split. If we wanted to do the scoping and feasibility, there'd be a match split with the other towns. If we also wanted to apply for the design and construction, that would also be a 20% match, but just held by Hardwick.
Exactly, exactly.
And we don't know what those numbers might be yet.
Well, I can start to talk a little bit. So the scoping study and Opie or Sherry, I think what they were last saying was like...
Might be...
60 to 80,000.
Yeah, so per, it would be split between the towns, so that would be like 3 to 6,000...
Sell per town.
The town would commit.
Based on the cost of the study. So, you know, that seems doable from my perspective, but I'm not sitting there where you have all these other things.
Where do we get at it?
Well, we get leverage from the study that happens, we get that going forward. And it, since we, as Doug Morton pointed out so clearly, um, we get to know what we don't know. The scoping helps us to know what we don't know. So going forward at, into the other phases, like we get some scoping around where the Yellow Barn is in that LVRT where that, you know, so some of those things that we just haven't even thought about yet, um, we can potentially start to get a bead on it and plan it. And, and we have that study, you know, it's just like when you write a grant and you have the stinking traffic study and you already have it, it gives you more information to...
So what is, what is Hardwick's commitment financially for the annual maintenance of the LVRT, of which we are the proud owners of the most mileage? What's, what's the, what's the maintenance plan for the LVRT?
So this is an excellent question, um, and I, I, I would put it to you all to, to like, think how you want to handle this because it is something we have to discuss and I don't know what the right body is to discuss it, but there's gonna be trash that has to be picked up. There's gonna be...
Trees that come down.
There's gonna be some places that have to be mowed.
Mowings, washouts.
Exactly.
Well, isn't that part of the scoping? Like, isn't that part of figuring out?
The scoping is more like signage.
Scoping is, this would be a great place for a flower bed.
I mean, the management, which I can...
There's nothing to do with the, there's nothing, no effort being put in. And if anyone has ever visited any of the other three rail trails that the state of Vermont is in charge of, you will find that they are in disrepair and very poorly maintained. So, and, and I've been, just so everyone knows, I was like the third guy at the table at the LVRT 30 years ago and have served as the chairman of the committee and put thousands of hours into the LVRT. So I fairly kind of been, I know what's going on. And I just see all this effort and all this fluff and all this joy about something that is falling apart where they've already constructed it. The Morseville to Cambridge, the West Danville to St. Johnsbury is already experiencing problems and maintenance, uh, you know, maintenance backlogs already. And I, I'm all for this thing. I've supported, I've put more time in this thing in anybody in Hardwick. And more, a hell of a lot more aggravation. Um, and it's like, no one is gonna magically be a beautiful place with rainbows and unicorns. And that's not what it's gonna be, folks. It's gonna be a very expensive trail.
It is if we talk about it and put money towards it.
Well, if we talk about the infrastructure before we talk about selling the infrastructure. If you're connecting something to downtown that is not gonna be here in three years 'cause it's gonna be in Lemoyle again because nobody stopped and picked the sticks out of the cobbles. And that's exactly what happens. So I'm not taking this out on you, I'm going to...
Oh, no, no, no. I'm, I'm all about worrying about maintenance. Don't worry.
Yeah, no, I mean, the fact of it is, it's a beautiful thing and I'm not against any of this, but Jesus, we gotta figure out, you know, next year, we might get away with not doing anything 'cause it'll be new. But the following year, I guarantee it, we're gonna be... Tommy, go to East Hardwick and fix the rail trail.
I will say...
We're not gonna have an option, right? If we don't have a plan, we don't have, we don't have an option, but to plug the hole, we're gonna be damned.
So are you suggesting that we pull together an ad hoc committee to look at this problem while these people are looking at this?
So I have, I, you know, I, my suggestion would be is if we're gonna match this, we put that same, we start on Lemoyle Valley maintenance plan and start putting money into that, right?
Right.
So at least so that if we're, if we're putting something, effort into it, even if it's 2,000 a year and 3,000 there, I mean, we, is, if we were looking, if we're seriously looking at the situation, I'm all good. And I understand it's gonna take time and we need to be working on both ends of the cow at the same time, but, you know, it's, it's really brilliant because we, we worked for 10 years to put a maintenance plan on the LVRT, 10 long, hard, millions of dollars spent. And as soon as the state of Vermont took over, ain't heard a word about it. Everything changed, eh, everything changed. Yeah, which says nothing. It says a lot of words.
Which says they're not gonna do it.
With nobody, it says they're not gonna do it, is what it says.
Well, that's not quite true. I, I do want to jump in here and just say, the towns are not responsible for trail maintenance, period. Now, I know, that doesn't mean it will get done, Danny. I'm not saying it will happen, but it's...
And they're not responsible, I agree.
It explicitly says the town has no responsibility for maintaining the trail itself. Any amenities, in other words, these trailheads, these pause places, those are on us.
They will be.
So that's why we have to be careful what we plan, that we think what we're putting in there are, is stuff we can actually maintain. And that is an issue, and I don't feel comfortable, like, I don't know that that's been totally discussed.
Well, I mean, and I understand, it's like any grant, you gotta be, you're, you gotta be responsible for that money you spend, but it's gonna do us no good to have beautiful trailheads in Hardwick and East Hardwick if the trail's washed out. You know, it, once, all it's gonna take is one break in that 93 miles and guess what? We're right back to the way we've been for decades where it's a non-contiguous sort of, kind of trail.
I think they'll, I think they'll be in deep, ooh, I'm being recorded. I think they will, um, hear about it if, because there's been such a... And they have created a whole new, there's like a, what is it, a, a section?
Yeah, yeah, and, and...
Just for the LVRT with its own staff. So, um, you know, if we see problems, I think we have to be really vocal about them because we didn't ask for this, it happened, you know, it's here. And I think a lot, we're excited about it, but, um, but we are not responsible for maintaining the trail.
No, but we're not responsible for it, but we're not responsible for it unless we want the trail to be successful.
No, you're right.
So, you know, not being responsible is, you know, it's like my 18-year-old is, I'm not responsible for it anymore, but I still gotta keep an eye on it.
Is there any reason why we can't? Because we're coming in, we're coming up to budget season, so it's a perfect time to have this conversation. If we had an LVRT line, line item that could potentially count as the 20% match and also if we don't get that or if we decide, whatever we decide, that could also help with it because it's gonna cost money. It's whether that's a part of, wherever we think that it probably should go into...
But is this the one where you gotta nod them on, one of these entries?
NVDA...
NBDA wants to know about the scoping study, part of it tomorrow.
This is joining the other towns to do the scoping study.
And they're writing that one, so they need to know whether we're going to be part of
And if a part, if, in my mind, if a part of the scoping and feasibility is how, is how we figure out how to maintain the bathrooms, how we figure out how to maintain the safety, like, I think that there's.
Is that though?
We can top it out for free.
No, but I mean, I think that that's a part of, our problems are going to be the same problems that other towns have. And so I haven't seen, I mean, I wasn't a part of the meeting, so I could be totally wrong, but there is, I think there's something to be said for six thousand dollars to be able to talk to their towns and figure out how we can support, I mean, if there's a way to have a partnership where Walden is helping us out with the far end of East Hardwick or Greensboro, whatever.
Yeah, but that's not what this, I don't think that's what this is about. I think this is about paying a consultant to come in.
Yeah, as he grew.
Really, it is, right?
I think it would be, I think it would be done by NBDA, by maybe even their own staff. I'm not sure, or if they would pay somebody. The, the scoping study?
Yeah.
Maybe they're paying somebody, I don't know. But, but here's, here's an idea. I mean, they did want to know by Friday, but hey, you know, we only just had this conversation on Monday. So, you know, I, I remember getting an email, did you also get that email? I think it was from Doug, saying that they were going to try and draft something with some more specifics about deliverables that we could show to our select board.
Right.
Would you not send that?
Right.
Yeah.
He hasn't sent that.
And we don't have that in hand yet, so it could be simply, I don't know, Hopey needs to jump in and like.
Wave his hands.
Wait, if he doesn't like, but maybe we simply leave the door open at this point, but say that we'd like to see that.
I mean, we have a retreat next Wednesday, so if we need to have an action item next Wednesday.
Or we have a, and we have another select board meeting in two weeks.
That's right.
Which is before the grant deadline.
That's right. What I'm hoping to come back to with the actual, like, numbers for the grant request and get your approval.
That would be great.
Because I'm also a little bit skeptical about putting a fair amount of money into a, a scoping study or something.
Well, they see us being way ahead, I don't see us all being the same, you know, I see the other towns, so that's my.
But the design and construction, it'd be great to have more, like, some deliverables or, or, I haven't seen, I haven't been a part of those meetings, so I don't know what the details are, but it would be nice to, that we need to make a decision on.
Construction stuff.
Fast, because Tracy's running.
So.
But that, that stuff, I think that's more like, those are things that, that we already think we want, right? Like, we already think we want a trailhead.
We can't use the four options.
Everybody decided that we want it.
We want the, yeah, we want one in East Hardwick and we want this one here in Hardwick and we, we kind of know what we're looking at, but it's going to be expensive and, and this grant fund is not, so just, just to throw out what you were saying today.
Yep, yep, yep.
We're, the East Hardwick one, they hired somebody already to do like.
The scoping and.
The scope and plan for how, you know, how to build this thing. And that person put a price tag of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a kiosk and like six parkinsons.
And that was the cheapest of the four options, so the four options.
Pavilion, not a kiosk.
Okay, pavilion, but still, okay, but still, like, the idea, I mean, the, the point, my point is that it costs a lot of money to do even small stuff these days. And the, the, this grant program we're talking about that's available to us now, they said today they, they would need to really be persuaded and be extenuating to fund something over sixty.
State of Vermont's smart enough to do something.
Sixty doesn't even build a pavilion, so, right. But I think we can argue extenuating because we have two sites.
But the match is pretty big on it.
Yeah, it is, it is. So here's what I, I'm putting out. I, I am, shouldn't be the one, you know, deciding this. I can help crunch the numbers and come up with some different ways we could approach it, but I would like to have some other people doing that with me.
I guess all I'm trying to say is that I feel like we're approaching this pot of money and I, I, I still need to be convinced, like, if we, if we already are going to be struggling to come up with a match for something we know we want to build, then I'm going to need to be convinced that we need, that we should pitch in for a match for a scoping study that's going to maybe tell us other things.
So is there, is there any thought that we should get this thing open and see what kind of traffic it's actually going to generate?
So that's the other thing, like, why do I?
Because ninety-nine percent of the people I see using the two sections that are open are local people, they're just walking their dog and taking their health walks. There's not, there's not five hundred people a day in Morseville walking the rail trail. It just isn't happening.
So I also want to say it's, it's.
You think so? You think it's ever?
So it sounds like, it sounds like Tracy's going to give us Doug's information about the deliverables of the scoping project because it's hard for us to assume what those are without knowing. We can make a decision next week or the week after. And then we need to, and then the other question that you have, Tracy, is about the design and construction grant, which would be on us to do. If there's some number crunching that we can do to figure out if it's worth it or not by Wednesday, that would be Wednesday or our next select board meeting, that would be great. But that also leaves not that much time to write the grant, so.
Right. I've got a lot of the grant written already, just not the money stuff. But I, and I'm fine coming up with a couple of ideas and spitballing them to you all on Wednesday, but I, you know, we're not going to be do, able to do everything we want to do.
Right.
And so I don't want to be the one like red line, like, we're not going to do, because I am not the one.
I'll do that.
Okay, okay, that's a deal.
You're awesome, we got a guy for that.
Hopey said that he's good with also waiting for more information from Doug and just wait a minute, see more at the next one.
Great, awesome, thank you.
And then we should also talk about our budget meeting about having some sort of line item for LVRT.
Well, we should do that absolutely for, for sure.
You're going to have to, I mean, if you have six thousand dollar pavilion up there, you can't even maintain your own building, right?
I was going to say.
And this building needs roofing work for it.
Yeah, we, we apply for grant for that, sit down.
When you start, when you start out, you have the bathrooms, who's going to clean the bathrooms?
I'm thinking Tracy.
That's a, that's a big question. No, that's a really big question.
Of course it's a big question.
That's been a question I've been asking for two years.
Every trail in the world is, it's a huge question.
Yeah, it is.
But Danny, before we move on.
All right.
Tuesday, I was at the depot, we had the open sign out, the door was open, a couple came in just because they were on the rail trail, they came into the depot. People from Little Rock, Arkansas. This afternoon, same thing, we're at the depot, the door is open, the open sign is there, couple comes in from Barry. They didn't come here to come to the Historical Society. They came into the Historical Society because we're there and it was open and they're from away. So we don't know what the numbers are going to be, but I think the numbers are going to surprise us of how many people.
Yep.
We could have an argument forever. So what did those people from Barry spend in Hardwick?
All right, Tracy's going to.
About two hours. I just need to make one confession and I really am sorry that I got out beyond the skis here, but Annie, who was at our meeting today, was from NBDA and I believe I mistakenly told her that we were going to be part of this. So I will email her in the morning and say, we're going to hang on before we totally commit because we need to see some more details, but I apologize for that.
It's okay.
Well, you said we think we're going to be, we don't know for sure until tonight and tonight's tonight.
Right, but anyway, I'm sorry if I confused anybody, I will fix that.
You can take liberties with us anytime.
Dave?
Just really quick, at the Historic Preservation Downtown Meeting Conference in St. John's Bay, there were a lot of good presentations on the economic aspects of rail trails here. I took some notes, but it's, that I think the presentations are also still available. I'd be happy to just kind of dispel some of that so that you, you know, these are measurable existing rail trails and how much economic impact it has for different areas already, you know, determined.
No, they, I understand, David, and I've read many of those studies and I know what I'm talking about.
All right.
When you're, you know, when you're, you're fifteen miles outside of Seattle and you have a rail trail, that's way different than when you're fifteen miles from Franklin, Vermont.
These are rail trails here in Vermont. These are, the presentations are in Vermont. Play it together, you can just look if you want.
I'll look at it.
How often?
I was looking at things that are semi-open minded.
Excellent, thank you. Semi, semi-open minds. Next item, a select board to review and assign, review and sign the agreement for the wastewater plant upgrade bond, which we kind of need to do because the bond vote passed and because we are here midway through the project. So what do we need to do?
I move we sign it.
Call somebody on the carpet. Why haven't we done it yet?
Yeah.
Amanda? Why haven't we done it yet? Calling you on the carpet on this one.
I did second that quietly.
So wait, so. So Wiz said we, she moves that we, uh, sign it.
She seconded it?
Haley already quietly seconded it, she said. Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Tracy.
Uh, so, anything we need to know about this?
Nope. Casey just wanted to express the, the, except the C, um, it's the amount, the forgiven.
Yep.
And it's the two million, it's the amount that is of the bond.
Right.
The two, 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 seven, three amount?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Great.
Cool. Let's go, let's do it, let's spend it.
Yeah. All right, so we had a, a motion and a second to execute the bond agreement and all in favor, oh, are you saying we needed it?
No, uh, just those favors are.
Right here.
Great.
There's two forms that everyone needs to sign and then one form that this area needs.
Okay.
Here we go.
So that, so all, all in favor of, um, executing the, the bond agreement for the wastewater plant upgrade, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries and we have, we're signing, it looks like we're signing exhibit D, exhibit C, and I'm signing something else. Oh, the list of exhibits. All right.
And I imagine part of the delay where we, they hitched in this was the whole, because we held off because of COVID and all that mess.
COVID, wasn't that fun? Is that what's happening down in Spalding right now? U thirty-two? Is that COVID? I know the school down, system down there has haven't been closed because of sickness. Haven't heard a person speak about COVID, but.
Staff.
Staff is sick. Yes, staff, too many staff members sick. I didn't know if it was COVID or.
All right, I'm going to move us along. Next item's item four, Cannabis Control Commission, which is currently us.
Yay.
To continue, to continue to discuss the potential approval for cultivator's license for Daniel Bowman, Baum, is that you?
Yes.
And how do we say your last name?
Baumann.
Baumann.
Yep.
Excellent.
There's a person, real person.
There's a real person, live and in person. And so we did this time, in our packet, we were able to review the, um, the DRB. Yeah, the DRB decision. So we had all that and, um.
Danny, you're our fir, you're our first.
You're our first?
So, congratulations.
Naturally, we're going to just say no. Because we're not sure we can. So we've got to, so we're just going to test it, see if it really matters if we say no.
Do you want to test it and bring samples?
No, no, not that. No, we, we've, we've been kind of trying to figure this all out ourselves, just, I'm sure you're, sure you're aware, very well aware.
I'm here.
The confusion, you are.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming, actually, that's a huge thing with me, people showing up. So what do we do?
So we.
This was in our packet, right? Or no?
No, it was in our.
Draw it. Yeah, so I, um, I believe that our.
So do you guys do this, just like, is this going to be online, like alcohol and tobacco? Or is this all paperwork or you don't know nothing?
No idea.
Kristin Leahy did inform me at the start of the meeting that you had made a decision as of last week based on this topic?
No, I don't think we did, I don't think we did either, I would say, I'm not, I personally don't know what we're supposed to do.
Okay. If you have any questions or concerns about being an operator of this small business, I'd be happy to answer that.
Yeah.
I'd also give you a status update where we are as a business and where we are on other bureaucratic, where we've been approved with the state, with the town three months, I was here three, four months prior to today's date. And was approved for commercial zoning of the property to operate my business, out of my property.
DRB.
A DRB meeting.
I think your biggest, I think your biggest question wasn't what, it would be great to hear about your business, but wasn't really about that specifically, it was more about the process because we're used to having, which you saw earlier tonight, we're used to kind of just saying yes or no to tobacco and liquor license, but we haven't gotten a ton of information from the state. And, and the process is just different because it's pre-approved by the zoning, DRB and the zoning commission and the state, so we're, I think what Danny was getting at, creeping from wrong, it's just that we're new to the process. And so we do really appreciate you being here, but those, that's what we have questions about, the process.
Right, because it's like, you've gotten yeses so far and people are asking us to say yes, but we're not really honestly sure what we're even saying yes to because it appears to us, or to me, that you've already got everything you need, except, except for the yes from us, which is based on, so, go ahead.
Ceremony of greeting.
Yeah, ceremony of greeting.
Yeah. Um, I'll tell you where I'm at presently. So the state informed my lawyers as well as put out a big thing with the Cannabis Control Board of Vermont as of the first week of July that said we could get started. It's October fourth now, retail stores have been open since Saturday. So this market is, is here now. It's been questioned, there's been lots of back and forth, back and forth. There are people issued with licenses. We were told we were allowed to get growing back in July, we did. We had our first crop come in and is available to market. I had a licensed retailer that has already done an agreement to purchase that. I have a check for that crop. Unfortunately, I, I, I don't know if my next motion is to move forward to have that check written to me personally and not my business because I can't open a state bank account with New England Federal Credit Union until I have a license number from the state. The last email I received from the state this afternoon says that we, we are awaiting Hardwick's town approval to give you that license number.
No pressure.
So, and, and, and I'm sorry, the state, I also may have mentioned too, the state was at my business on Monday, giving me an inspection. I passed with flying colors as well as they were fairly impressed with where we are at on safety and efficiency realms comparatively to the other forty-some-odd sites they'd already been to this year. That's where we are.
So my understanding is that the, that the only way our Cannabis Control Commission can, can deny a permit is if it basically violates our zoning bylaws in some way.
Which I've already.
Which you've already, a hurdle you've already cleared.
Yeah.
So let's just tell them.
So can I make a motion that we approve the cultivator's license for Daniel Baumann?
Second.
Thank you.[1643.61]
So you get the second?
Second.
Okay, so do we have more discussion?
Thank you for being here, Danny, I'm sorry it took us a little while.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm here, we're not yet, I, I saw it was, it was pushed along in the last agenda, and I apologize I wasn't here last week, or last, two weeks ago.
Well, initially, all we had was your name, period, that was it, your name, nothing, not a single, there was nothing.
We didn't have the DRB.
Much of this was, no DRB decision, it was like, well, it looks like a nice name.
I have no, I have no problem whatsoever explaining once again what we do as a tier-one indoor cultivator without a mixed-use permit, um, I use bipolar ionization as well as large carbon filters to address any sort of, I know stench was brought up with my neighbor that was here, um, as opposing this topic when I was originally here for zoning, um, we are an indoor cultivation facility, um, in a rural residential district very outside of town, uh, we do not produce or, or manufacture, we do not, we're not open to retail, we strictly cultivate indoors in a controlled environment, um, and have no plans to move outside. We just want, and, and, uh, we will be selling our product in-state, obviously, there is no current retail in Hardwick, which is, I believe, the primary reason as to why this control board was created, which I totally approve. If you drive through some rural towns in Maine, it's kind of obscene with what local zoning has allowed for, for cannabis, as far as just right on the main drag, really apparent, and kind of taking over the town, I, I do think, uh, there should be a lot of control in retail, in regards to my specific scenario, we're just a small-time cultivator on the outsides of town, and, uh, just trying to afford to stay here in Hardwick.
Is this, is this your side hustle, or is this something that you've been on?
This is my business, yeah, this is how I survive, yeah, 100%. And I, and I, I, you know, I said this last time, I, I understand, I was really, um, grateful for Kristin Leahy's, as well as the rest of the zoning board's response to allow me to do this in a rural residential district, I'm strictly just trying to be able to afford to still live in Vermont, um, which not many children, not many youth in my age are able to do anymore.
Did you grow up in Vermont?
Yes, I did, born and raised, as well as my mother.
So we're a little, we're, so we do, I believe, still have a motion on a second on tape. So I just want to pull us back in and say, uh, unless there's any last minute discussion, all in favor of approving the license, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, so, there you go.
Quick, Daniel, we are working on potentially forming a control commission that's not the select board, would you potentially be interested in?
No.
Being a part of that, because I think having somebody in the industry would be really.
Yeah, I think we'd be, I think we need a couple people in the industry.
There you go.
All, all it really needs to do is you can take a 500-foot tape, bring it down from Hazen, bring it across the elementary school, realize that you can't have a store in town, and stop there.
There you go.
There's a couple of spots.
Is there a spot?
I got a little spunk down on that hill, right?
Maybe, maybe like maybe, or the old bank.
In the Maye building.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you for coming.
With, uh, with that motion, just, uh, the state is, is looking for.
For something.
Yes.
So I don't know, do we have something, did you bring something to sign, or no?
I didn't, no.
That would be Mr. Upson.
Or Tonya?
Yep, I've been in contact with Mr. Upson, as well as Kristin, and I, I just don't bother anybody further than I should, that's why.
I don't.
You got to figure it out.
Can we contact you on Tuesday?
Yep, absolutely, I look forward to hearing from you.
It may just be the minutes that get posted on Tuesday.
Oh, you already said just a minute is what you mean, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can bring a female to the state of Vermont, but they, they, I forget the exact wordage, but they are waiting on you.
Opie and/or Tanya won't be back until Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, good job, keep it, good luck.
So if you don't, if you, yeah, if you don't hear back, just call the town manager's office.
You'll be here.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. All right, so next item is another Cannabis Control Commission, one to consider approving a cultivator's license for clean cannabis.
Yep, well.
Is there anything?
They also passed their.
That's all.
Yep, I read the, I read both the DRB stuff.
Yep.
It's all very, very good, they've got some conditions.
Yep.
They need to hear do, and I'd say this is, this is the one in the gravel pit.
Right.
Yeah, we've already been there for a part of it.
Have you already?
Wow.
Legit or distant learn?
Learn.
Oh, yeah.
I heard it was.
Morning, 12:00 in the morning.
Nice.
Heard it was quite a facility, though.
It's quite a facility.
All right, so.
Was it a motion being?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I can second it.
I don't see anything different than what we just did, so I don't know why we would.
Any dis, more discussion on, on the second one, I think it's the same scenario where they, that really what we have is the zoning bylaws that need to be maxed.
The only thing I would say is whatever we do for Daniel, we do for them at the same time, just even though they're not here. I don't think we request them, I think we came on as always. He wants to.
Whatever we do.
His letter, or minutes, or whatever they need.
Yep.
Make sure we include that in this.
Thank you very much.
So, okay, so we've got a motion and a second for the, uh, the license for the clean cannabis, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, excellent. Item seven, back to zoning, is, uh, adopt, uh, or consider adopting the zoning bylaw changes that we.
Make the motion that we adopt the bylaw changes that we talked about earlier?
As written.
As written.
Any more discussion? We had, we had a discussion right before this at the.
Hearing.
Hearing. All in favor of adopting the, uh, bylaw changes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, uh, Kristin did note before she left that, uh, those changes will take effect in 21 days now that we've, um, approved them. Uh, any select board reports?
Uh, today was the last day that the Historical Society is open to the walk-in public, uh, but if you want to come up, you know, you've got something, you need to use it, or you just want to come see us, let me know, and, um, we can work out an appointment, but our season is close.
Okay.
Chicken was good.
Thank you.
Coal saw was excellent. Put coal saw in a bag, I'm guessing, right?
No, 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 the coal saw, the coal saw was locally made with locally grown cabbages.
Oh my God.
It was fresh. Much better than a Cisco coal saw.
I only like coal, good coal saw, it was good coal saw.
Yeah, it was good coal saw.
Right, Eric, I'm sure you had chicken and coal saw.
No, it didn't.
Bought two meals and then wasn't here.
Right, and we sold them to somebody else.
Good, too. Well done.
Yeah, I, I should thank the public for the support because it was a very successful, we made 100, they cooked 170-something chickens and, or halves of chickens, and we sold all but two.
That's, well, you want just enough, you don't want to run out, and you don't want to have too many. Beautiful.
Right.
Any other reports?
I just have a quick one, the Equity Committee, um, has applied to be a part of the Ideal Program, which is a state-run opportunity, I think I brought up at a different meeting, right now, there's not any, um, finance, financial aspect to it, but basically it would be the town apartment being a part of, um, a group with a bunch of other different towns, and there would be future grant funding opportunities, so we'll know about that in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Tomorrow night at the townhouse is the Black Fly Story Hour, second one, the last one for this season, and then next spring we'll probably bring it back because it's been successful. 7 o'clock, I think that's correct, 7 o'clock, I think, um, it's on the board, it's on the sign, uh, in front of the townhouse. And then, uh, Saturday night is, the Rec Committee is showing a movie, Scooby-Doo and the Mystery of Something or Other. And then also on October 22nd, Rec Committee is showing a movie, I think it's Lost Boys, which is an interesting one, for 17 and older. Tomorrow night's a kids' one. That's all I can think of right now.
Scooby-Doo is kind of all ages, I would say.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all, it's Lost Boys, it's not, Lost Boys is not all.
Did, uh, I don't know if I told you that we did, we've received official word that we got the RTP project for Wright Farm Road.
I don't know if we told us that either.
But anyway, so we finally, I knew we were going to get it a long time ago, but we finally received word, although it's too late in the construction season to do it this year, we'll be doing that in the spring, over $60,000.
Good. Excellent.
Congratulations.
It's a good thing.
Well done.
It's what I do.
All right, new business? Old business? We have written down here a reminder that I'm sure Casey. Uh, there's a select board retreat on October the 12th, um.
Wednesday?
Is this a Tricca Retreat, or?
Yes.
Is it here to be set up to?
No, it's up at the, uh, Community Center, up at the police station.
What time?
In the senior center?
Yes.
What time?
9:00.
9:00 to 10:00?
9:03.
It's all day.
And there's an agenda?
You guys really want to spend all day with me?
I don't know if we've posted the agenda, but yes, there is one.
Now, is that a meeting, or is it like an executive, I'm just asking because I don't know.
It's a meeting with lots of, um, like, budget discussions.
Presentations.
So you guys, Opie.
Budget.
I mean, to make sure we're working on an agenda, so we met some.
There we are, oh, we are.
It's got an agenda.
Tracy's going to talk about stuff, Tracy's going to talk about capital.
You feeding us?
Yep.
Yep.
What do we have?
I don't know, something really healthy.
Coal saw.
Coal saw.